Everybody, it's 6:30, so we're gonna start. The mayor cannot be here today, she's out of town, so I'm filling in for her. And we're gonna start with a call to order.
Commissioner Joseph?
Here.
Commissioner Seivacan?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Here.
And Mayor Sfetson, as you mentioned, is absent, so we have a quorum.
Okay, perfect. Pledge of allegiance, let me see, David, you wanna lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the invocation by Rabbi Baron, thank you very much, Rabbi.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, it's wonderful to see you all today. Dear God, master of the universe, we stand humbled before you this evening, and we recognize all of your blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We are mindful of the fact that you have blessed this city with wonderful leadership, direction, dedication, and a guiding spirit, which has resulted in the many successful achievements over the last 27 years. We recognize that we are gathered before you this evening in pursuit of fulfilling your wishes. As you, dear God, empowered humanity with seven basic universal laws after the great flood of Noah, these laws were once again reaffirmed by Moses at Mount Sinai to be taught to all of humanity, universal laws that provide a framework of law, order, and justice, which will allow humanity to settle the earth in a civilized manner. We recognize that we have been entrusted by the citizens of Sunny Hills Beach to perform this sacred duty. Almighty God, please provide us with the consciousness to constantly be aware of your presence, so that we are consistent to our mandate. Please grant us the wisdom, intuition, sensitivity, and the patience necessary to succeed, so that we leave a legacy of having a positive impact upon society for many generations to come. Protect our police force, our servicemen and women, serving domestically and overseas in the name of freedom and democracy. Please give them the peace of mind, insight, and intuition to be successful. Please guide our city staff to make the right decisions with honesty, integrity, and knowledge for all of our citizens into the future. And may they continue to serve as positive role models for our beautiful community. Almighty God, in these times, we do not take our health and safety for granted. May everyone gathered here tonight, and all residents of Sunny Hills Beach be granted with good health, peace of mind, and prosperity, and let us say amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. Now, the opening message?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate your attendance, and thank you for joining us tonight. Before we begin, there are a few important reminders regarding conduct during our commission meetings. Please ensure all electronic devices are turned off or set to silent mode to maintain the integrity of our proceedings. Mutual respect is the foundation of productive discussions. We ask that everyone remain silent and attentive when someone is addressing the commission. Clapping, applauding, heckling, or any verbal outbursts, either in support or opposition of the speaker, are strictly prohibited. Any individual wishing to address the commission must fill out a public speaker's card and submit it to the city clerk before the relevant item is announced. Each speaker is granted a maximum of three minutes. Should you exceed this time, the chair will notify you to conclude your remarks. Speak directly to the agenda's points, remain concise, and avoid redundancy. Should an individual speak without the chair's permission, or continue speaking after a warning, they may be escorted out of the chambers. It is essential to avoid making impertinent, slanderous remarks, or becoming boisterous while addressing the commission. Such behavior may lead to being barred from future commission appearances, unless the majority of the commission members present vote otherwise. The presiding officer may disallow signs or placards in the commission chamber. Please exit the chamber quietly and without disruption. The goal of our meetings is to facilitate public input and participation. However, disruptive or disorderly conduct hinders our collective objective. Individuals who want to speak on an item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair, and/or you do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of chambers. In order to maintain orderly conduct and/or proper decorum at these meetings, anyone who interferes with the orderly process of the meetings after a warning may be removed from the meeting and may be barred from further appearance before the city commission, as permitted in S. 286-0114, FS., and SS. 74-5, and 74-21 of the city's Code of Ordinances. Any necessary removal will be made at the direction of the mayor and will be carried out by law enforcement or designated sergeant-at-arms. It is essential that attendees adhere to these rules of procedure to ensure productive meetings that serve both the public and the city commission. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding.
So the first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of minutes of the June 20th commission meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Okay, everybody in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Now, we're onto section four, the Order of Business, and there's only one change to tonight's agenda. It's a revision to item 10H, which is an agreement with CT Mechanical. The change is that it's changing from a ratification of an agreement to an actual approval of the agreement.
Okay, thank you, Mauricio. Okay, no special presentations, correct?
No, sir.
No, okay.
So we just need a motion to approve the change to the agenda.
Okay, perfect.
So moved.
Okay, anybody second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, perfect. So next item is 7A.
7A.
It's an ordinance?
Yes, 7A is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, repealing Chapter 17 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Sunny Hills Beach, entitled Computer Use and Electronic Communications, providing for repealer and providing for an effective date, and this is first reading.
Stan?
Thank you. Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is an ordinance that repeals, this is repealing Chapter 17 of our Code of Ordinances regarding computers and electronic communications, and based on some new requirements by Florida law, we are repealing this and going to be instituting IT policies and procedures administratively.
Okay, perfect. Any public speakers, any public comment on this item? Okay, any comments from the commission?
No.
No, okay. Anybody wanna move, make a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
This is a roll call, yes, but first we need a motion.
Yeah.
So, roll call. Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Commissioner Seivacan?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading, second reading will be scheduled for August.
Thank you. Now, item 7B?
7B is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number 2023-606, approving budget amendment number BA 2324-03 to the city's operating and capital improvement budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year, General Fund and Capital Projects Fund, authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mauricio, Stan?
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is one of our standard budget amendments that we do throughout the year, closing out some prior year balances, carrying over some money, adjusting some fund balance, and reallocation of other funds.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment on item 7B?
No, sir.
No, okay. Reminder, for anybody that wants to speak on a specific item, please fill out a card, they're in the back, or if you have any comments on the citizens forum, you could also please fill out a card, okay, in case you forgot. So, okay, moving on, oh no, we gotta vote. Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second? Okay, perfect, all in favor?
It's a roll call.
It's a roll call.
Yes, so Commissioner Seivacan?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading, and second reading is scheduled for August.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now, moving on to item 7C?
7C is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, repealing Chapter 227 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Sunny Hills Beach, entitled Signs Temporary Political, and Chapter 265, Article 9, Section 265-63, entitled Temporary Political Signs, repealing and replacing Chapters 265, Article 9, Section 26557, entitled Temporary Signs, amending Chapter 265, Article 9, Section 26551, 26552, 26555, 26556, to conform to the existing law and to establish regulations governing the use and display of temporary signs, renumbering Chapter 265, Article 9, Section 26563.1, 26563.2, and 26563.3, providing for repealer, severability, codification, and an effective date. This is first reading.
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is a revision to our sign ordinance, keeping it updated with current law, and based on the feedback that we've gotten from you regarding temporary signs.
Okay, thank you. Who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Before, I'm so sorry to interrupt, Vice Mayor, if I may?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
So, just procedurally, because we are amending the land development regulations, this ordinance needs to be referred to the local planning agency, so at the time, the motion is made if that part can be included as well, so that we can have it for the record. So a motion essentially would be to refer this ordinance prior to second reading to the LPA, and then scheduling for a second reading.
Okay.
Okay, and how long is it anticipated that that would take?
No, it'll be next month.
Oh, okay. It'll be next month?
Yeah, it'll be, so essentially, and for the benefit of the public, this board sits as a local plenary agency as well, provided, you know, as permitted by Florida statute, so essentially you're just referring it to yourselves before final action is taken.
So right now I have to make a motion to refer it to the LPA?
One of your colleagues will make a motion to refer it to the LPA and approve it on first reading.
And approve on first reading, and then they'll come back for a second reading?
They'll come back in August for second reading.
In August, okay. Who would like to make a motion?
So I will make that motion to refer this, yes, this resolution to the LPA.
And I'll hold that second, we need a public speakers, which we have now, but just for the record.
Okay, any public speakers on this item? No? Now, can we comment on this, or?
Yes.
Any comment from the commission?
No, I don't have any, I think we hashed out.
So, going back to your motion to refer it to the LPA?
Yes, I make two seconds.
Perfect, so this is a roll call. Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Commissioner Seivacan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading, it'll be referred to the local planning agency, and the second reading will take place in August.
Thank you, okay. Now, no more ordinances, we're moving on to resolutions, resolution 10A?
10A is a resolution ratifying the expenditure of forfeiture funds from the Department of Justice to purchase a Jeep Gladiator Rubicon, and authorizing the chief of police to expend forfeiture funds to purchase upgrades for the Jeep Gladiator Rubicon, and for upgrades to the CCTV system at government center.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager?
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this allows us to spend forfeiture funds for two purposes. One is to purchase a high-water vehicle for the police department, and the other is to upgrade our CCTV cameras in the government center lobby.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public speakers on item 10A?
No, sir.
No, okay. Any commission discussion?
I just have a question, the vehicle is gonna stay in the city?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Another question.
Who'd like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second, okay. This is a voice board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, okay, moving on to 10B?
10B is a resolution approving an agreement with Millennium Products to upgrade the CCTV system at government center.
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is the company that we're going to use that will upgrade our closed-circuit television in the government center. It's related to the item that you just approved for the expenditure of forfeiture funds.
Okay, thank you. Any public speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Any commission comments?
No.
No, okay. Who'd like to make a motion?
Motion, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, perfect. Item 10C?
10C is a resolution approving a mutual aid agreement between the city of Sunny Hills Beach and the city of Miami, Florida, for participation in the Miami Police Auto Crimes Task Force.
Okay, Stan?
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this allows for a mutual aid agreement between the city and the city of Miami specifically related to auto crimes task force investigation.
Okay, any public speakers?
No, sir.
No, commission, any comments?
No.
From the commission, no?
Mutual aid is always welcome.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Okay, who would like to make a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 10D?
10D is a resolution ratifying the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of two 2023 4x4 Jeep Gladiator vehicles from Kendall Jeep.
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this will allow the expenditure of funds, budgeted funds, for the purchase of two of the 4x4 Jeep Gladiator vehicles from Kendall Jeep.
Okay, perfect. Any public comment?
No, sir.
On this item, any comment from the commission? Who would like to make a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item 10E?
10E is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of budgeted funds, excuse me, no, we are, yes, I'm so sorry, 10E, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of four Toyota RAV4 LE hybrid vehicles from Seminole Toyota.
Okay, thank you, Stan?
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is authorizing the purchase of four Toyota hybrid vehicles from Seminole Toyota for the building department.
Okay, any public comment?
No, sir.
Any comment from the commission?
No.
Okay, who would like to make the motion?
Motion.
Okay, second?
Taken.
Okay, perfect, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye, okay, so the item passes. Item 10F?
10F is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with MT Cosley LLC to provide non-exclusive structural inspection and plan review services on an as-needed basis.
Okay, go ahead, Stan?
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this allows for an amendment to the agreement with the company known as MT Cosley LLC. We use them to assist with structural inspections and plan review services on an as-needed basis.
Okay, thank you. Any public speakers on item 10F?
No, sir.
No, okay, any comments from the commission?
No.
Okay, who'd like to make a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The item passes, moving on to 10G?
10G is a resolution ratifying the issuance of a purchase order to Thompson Pump and Manufacturing for the purpose, excuse me, for the purchase of two water pumps.
Okay, perfect, go ahead, Stan?
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is ratifying the purchase of two significant water pumps. Due to our recent flooding event, we determined that we needed additional pumps and resources, so we did, we have purchased these pumps, bringing it to you for approval.
Okay, thank you. Now, on a related item, I see that there's some work being done in Central Island? Is that repairs, or is that part of the job we were talking about?
It's-
With installing some of those smaller pumps?
We're beginning that process, it's in addition to what we have here. These will be mobile pumps that are on trailers that we can move to areas where we need it.
As needed.
As needed.
As needed, okay, okay, perfect.
So what are we doing in Center Island now, we're drilling wells?
We're beginning the initial stages of putting in-
What we discussed, yes, yes, okay.
Exactly.
Right, and the-
Well, I know we know, but maybe the public doesn't know. Could you go over what it is that we're doing, Stan?
Yeah, hold on, Jerry, Jerry, let's go back to public comments, and then we come back to any comments from the commission, so we don't get out of order. So, are there any public speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, now, any comments from the commission?
Okay, I was just asking, Stan, that the public does not know what we're doing in Center Island, if you could just give them some type of explanation?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead, Stan.
Originally, we had put out to bid a substantial project for the drainage issues we're having in the Central Island area, but the bid came back at substantially more than what we anticipated. So, we rejected that bid, we put the entire project out to bid again, and it came in at least triple what we had anticipated because of rising cost. So we've gone back, we've re-engineered the project, and instead of doing one or two substantial wells, we're now going to put in approximately 10 to 13 smaller wells to try to mitigate a lot of this flooding that we're having. These two mobile pumps, we found that we need for any area that may anticipate flooding because of the recent event that we had.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further comments from the commission? No, okay, motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, perfect, the item passes. Now, moving on to item 10H?
10H is a resolution waiving the bidding requirements set forth in Chapter 62 of the Code of Ordinances, approving an agreement with CT Mechanical Company for the replacement and installation of an air conditioning unit at Pelican Community Park.
Okay, Stan?
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is an item that we had an addendum on, and the issue is that we had anticipated being able to get this air conditioning unit and replaced and installed at PCP, but we were not able to get the parts in time, so this is approving the item versus ratifying the item. So there's about a two-to-three-month delay in getting this equipment in.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any public comment?
No, sir.
No, any comment from the commission?
No.
No, okay, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, everybody in favor?
Yes.
Aye, okay, the item passes. Now, to item 10I?
10I is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company as the primary awardee to provide fleet maintenance and repair services to the city's fleet.
Okay, Stan?
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this allows for an amendment to the agreement. Goodyear Tire handles a lot of our general fleet maintenance and repair to our vehicles, looking at other cost-saving measures, but so far this seems to be working to keep us up to speed.
Any public comment?
No, sir.
No, any comment from the commission?
No.
No.
Okay, motion?
Motion.
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the item passes. Now, 10J?
10J is a resolution establishing the city of Sunny Hills Beach proposed ad valorem tax millage levy rate at 1.8000 mils per 1,000 of taxable assessed value, which is 3.49% more than the rollback rate of 1.7393 mils for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Okay, thank you, Stan?
Mayor, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this establishes our millage rate at 1.8, so we have, based on your direction, be extremely fiscally conservative, we've effectually lowered the millage from 1.9 to 1.8 this upcoming year.
Okay, perfect. Please, can we hold the talking, because it distracts us, please? No talking, so everybody can listen, and we can listen too. Okay, so any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, any comment from the commission?
I don't.
Okay.
Yes, I would like to say-
Go ahead, Jerry.
That we're just going through the budget, and I know that for every 2 million that we spend on reducing the millage, we can get it down by one-tenth, so I'm still looking to get it down, if possible, to 1.7, if at all possible.
Okay, and the other comments?
No.
Okay, perfect, so, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the item passes, and item 10K?
10K is a resolution waiving the bidding requirements of Chapter 62 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Sunny Hills Beach, authorizing the expenditure of budgeted funds with Dream for Kids, Inc., to provide theater classes for registrants of the cultural and community services program.
Okay, Stan?
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this waives the bidding requirements to expend budgeted funds with Dream for Kids, theater classes for our cultural and community services program.
Okay, any public speakers on item 10K?
No, sir.
No, okay, any comment from the commission?
I do have a question, so these theater classes are only in Russian, right?
Yes, currently, they're only offered in Russian.
If a child only speaks Spanish or English, wants to participate, can he still participate?
Yes, they can.
Okay, that's my question.
How would that be possible?
Go ahead, Stan.
They're welcome to participate.
But it's entirely in Russian.
Jerry, Jerry, come here.
Through me.
All right, you could go ahead and ask.
So it's entirely in Russian, so how would a non-Russian-speaking person participate?
Go ahead, Stan.
I imagine they would have to learn really quickly.
Anyhow, okay, so do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
No, any comment from the commission?
No.
Motion?
Motion.
Okay, anybody second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Item 10L?
10L is a resolution approving a second amendment to the agreement with Neighbors, Giblin, and Nickerson, PA for general professional legal services.
Go ahead, Stan.
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this amendment, we have budgeted funds in an amount not to exceed 60,000, will allow for more in-office services from our city attorney.
Okay, perfect, okay, thank you very much. So, any public speakers on item 10L?
No, sir.
No, any from the commission?
No.
No, okay.
No.
Motion?
We'll keep you busy, Alan.
We'll keep you busy, yeah, you'll see us more, perfect, yeah.
Motion, I make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, item 10M?
10M is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with Ronald L. Book, PA for professional legislative- Book, PA for professional legislative relations, relations and lobbying services.
Okay, Stan?
Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, this is the same item that we did last year, approving an agreement with Ron Book for legislative and lobbying services for us in an amount not to exceed seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay. Uh, any public speakers?
No, sir.
No? Any comment from the Commission?
No.
No.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that this number hasn't changed in, uh, about two, three years, correct? Stan?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
And I would add that they, they've really upped their game, I think, the past couple of years, and I, I appreciate getting more direct communication from them.
Okay.
And they are setting up meetings for us and helping us, um, in Tallahassee when we're there coordinated, so, um, I appreciate that, and, you know, they're not, everything else is going up. It's nice to see that this isn't.
Yeah, it's nice to see, I mean, I still see the same number year after year, and then also, it's important to note that they do help us, uh, win some grants for any, uh, capital improvements or any improvements to the city, so, um, yeah, it is well, well worth it, I would say.
And Mayor, uh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, if I may, I was just gonna say that the amount of monies that we receive in grants back, to your point, exceeds the amount of money that we spend on this.
We get that, the, the ROI, for sure.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, um, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, 10N?
10N is a resolution pursuant to Section five point one of the municipal charter, calling for a general election to be held on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four, for the purpose of submitting to the electorate of the City of Sunny Isles Beach the names of all qualified candidates for election to the positions of City Commissioner, Seat One, Northern Area, and City Commissioner, Seat Three, Southern Area, providing for a runoff election, if necessary, to be held on Tuesday, December third, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, perfect. Would you like, uh-
Yeah, so it's, uh, pretty self-explanatory, is, this is a, a resolution that's needed to be able to be placed on the ballot. Um, it's a requirement by Miami-Dade County Elections Department. Uh, the only thing that I would add, um, for those that are listening, those are, that are in the audience, um, the official qualifying period for, for candidates begins on August thirteenth and runs through August sixteenth.
Okay, thank you. Any public speakers on this item, item 10N?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. Any comments from the Commission?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, uh, moving on to Citizens Forum?
We have an add-on.
We have an add-on? Okay.
Um, hold on, Vice Mayor, it, it wasn't made, so, if, if you still want to add it on, it should have been mentioned at the beginning of the meeting-
Well, that, I'm not running the meeting.
I understand. Um, so, right now, the procedure would be, you can mention it, introduce it, and then we would require a motion by the Commission to accept the add-on.
Correct. Yes, so I will make a motion to accept an add-on, uh, resolution.
Okay. Um, could you explain what the resolution is?
Yes, the resolution is, um, a resolution in full support of Israel and prohibiting the City of Sunny Isles Beach from establishing relationships, financial, ceremonial, or otherwise, with countries or any city within that country that supports, uh, that support or legitimize any terrorist organization or state, or any territory controlled by a terrorist state, organization, or regime.
Okay, so it would be a motion which, uh, Commissioner Joseph made?
For the Commission to accept an add-on.
So, just to explain, um, based on the guidelines for Commission-initiated items, any items that are being added to the agenda as an, as a walk-on after the agenda has been published, need, uh, the approval from your colleagues. So, essentially, right now-
So, we're waiting on a second to see if we wanna add this item to the agenda.
And then I would have to note one thing from your code. The, as proposed, I've been told I speak too close to the microphone. Uh, as proposed, the same substantive resolution with some minor deviations was presented at the last meeting. Under your code, you cannot reintroduce that for a period of three months. The only way that you could reconsider the substance of it would be to do a reconsideration of the resolution you had last month.
Okay.
So, according to your code, my counsel to you is, under your code, as proposed, this resolution could not be added to the agenda, it'd have, you'd have to wait till September.
So, this, this, in its form, cannot be added to the agenda?
Under your code, because substantively, it's, it's essentially the same-
Same as last month.
Except with some minor deviation, and in fact, the way its phrase would encompass the relief that was asked last, because it talks about all agreements and your sister city.
It does not mention sister city.
It doesn't, but that's by agreement. So, the, as proposed, they would also include sister city agreements. So, it's the same relief as last time as well, so, um, because it's so close in substance, either it has to be brought back in September, or if you want, you can do a reconsideration of the last resolution, but that's the only way that subject matter can come back onto the agenda.
Okay.
Unless, unless the Commission, in reading this language, accepts it, correct?
Jerry, please through the chair.
Yes, okay.
So, okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So, Alan, is that correct?
The City Commission can do what it wants. I have no decisional authority. I can only counsel you, but if you do that, I would just counsel you that that would be in violation of your code.
It'll be a violation of the code, so right now, Jerry has the choice to make a motion to reintroduce last month's, um-
It would be a motion for reconsideration.
Motion to reconsider the, the one last month.
Right.
Correct? And then, if that gets seconded, that will get added to the agenda, last month's resolution, correct? And then, we'll have to vote on it again?
Except there's a little, it's not a three-step process the way your code's written. So, you would have to do a motion for reconsideration. If that's granted, that technically gets removed from the prior agenda and gets placed essentially after you have, do another motion to add it to this agenda, you do that, and then you can consider the reconsideration. So, you first have to agree to whether you're gonna reconsider it or not, add it to the agenda, and potentially deviate also from the, the, uh, the agenda, 'cause we've already passed that portion of it, and then you'd vote on the substance of it, the actual reconsideration.
So, Jerry, go ahead.
Okay. So, I would like to say that upon each Commissioner reading the same language that you've ruled on, Alan, if they consider it to be different from last month's, enough different from last month's motion, resolution, then this can be considered as a new resolution today, correct?
If the City Commission determines that to be the case, again, it would be against my counsel, but you all can do what, what, what you want.
Okay, so I'm going to ask each Commissioner if they've had the time to read over the resolution, to see if it's different enough from last month's non-vote resolution, whether, uh, this would be acceptable to consider to be added on to this Commission and to be voted on.
And just to note that what you have before you is not a resolution, it's a memo describing the resolution, so we would have to have more detail-
Yes, so it would have to be drafted, correct?
So, thi- this, at, at its present form, is just a, a, a memo, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's not a resolution, it's not in resolution form, okay. Um, so, Mr. Attorney, can, so his motion still stands at this moment? Wha- what's your motion right now to-
My motion is for the, the, uh, Commission, upon reading of this language, to consider it different enough from last month's non-vote resolution to-
But-
Allow it to be presented for a vote tonight and have it drafted as a resolution.
Okay. Jerry, I mean, just my own opinion here is that-
Have you read it over?
I, I, I've read this, yeah, but, but the, the issue I'm having, not, nothing against you, is that this is really not a resolution, and then we would be voting on, on some, on a memo.
Even though Alan had it, uh, earlier this afternoon, a resolution was not prepared.
I wasn't asked to do a resolution, and it was provided to me right before the three o'clock meeting. There's no way I would prepare a resolution that quickly.
Okay, so, so can we vote on a memo?
No. You'd have, your vote, your motion would be to add, first, you need to add this item, whether you're gonna add to item, this item to the agenda or not, which is a motion for a resolution. Um, again, I don't think your code allows you to do that, but it would be a motion to add it to the agenda essentially as a proposed resolution.
A proposed resolution, then we'll vote on this. But the issue I'm having is that this as, uh, the way it is, is not a resolution, it's not written, you know what I mean?
It needs to be, the resolution upon acceptance needs to be drafted.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, if-
I understand.
Can I, can I add something?
Go ahead.
So, right now, the only discussion that should be had is whether you all are going to agree to add this item to the agenda, the motion.
Okay, got it.
After, if it's decided to be added to the agenda, then you all can enter into the discussion whether this is, deviates from the previous agenda.
Understood, okay, all right. So, who wants to second Jerry's motion to add this onto the agenda?
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
So, it's two to two?
It fails.
It fails. Yeah.
And now, public comment?
Okay, so, Vice Mayor, if we may, we can proceed to, uh, the Citizens Forum.
Yeah.
We have a few public speakers. The first one is George Bardemesser. Okay?
George Bardemesser, eighteen-nine-eleven Collins Avenue, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission. Uh, David Samuels once wrote, "Politics is the art of governing men. As such, it necessarily partakes of the irrational. Men are motivated by all kinds of things, both good and bad. They're motivated by tales of heroism, calls to sacrifice, and by the desire to defend their families and homes. They're motivated by calls to expel foreigners and to restore ancient purities. They're motivated by lust, including the lust for distinction, by greed, by prospect of violence, by the hope of recovering a golden past that historians might agree never happened, and by promises of attaining an otherworldly paradise which rationalist philosophers might dismiss as nonsense. So, let us return to the last Commission meeting. What have you motivated anyone to believe about you? Four Commissioners refused to support a resolution that said that Sunny Isles Beach did not need sister cities from countries that support Hamas and Hezbollah. Four Commissioners put their own petty grievances ahead of the common good. Four Commissioners tarnish themselves with dishonor. It's a stain you can never scrub off. Four Commissioners took a stance that notorious congressional anti-Semites Ilhan Omar and Rashida Tlaib would be proud of. Our four Commissioners-"
I, I call for the quorum, Alan. I'm calling for the quorum. We didn't vote for nothing last, in last Commission meeting, nothing regarding, uh, sister cities or anything like that.
Nothing was voted, it failed, it, it failed for a motion and a second.
Exactly. So, nobody voted against nothing?
I didn't say anyone voted for it.
Okay.
May I continue?
Please do.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Attorney, i- is, is he okay? Um, obviously, he's referring to us, and, um, I'm not sure if this is something that will be pertinent to the, uh, to the business.
Um, at, so far, yes, because it's re- it's regarding a resolution that was before you last meeting, but for, for now.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, this time, you can't hide behind the mustache. Uh, four Commissioners-
Again, the quorum, yeah, the quorum, please.
George, George, I'm gonna ask you to please, uh, don't, you know, be, be within the rules of the, uh, quorum, please.
Yes.
Obviously, you're making a reference that, you know, is recognizable, so I ask you to please, uh, utilize, um, some decency and common sense.
Yes, uh, with all due respect, Vice Mayor, it is my constitutional right to criticize our elected public officials, including elected public officials criticized by name.
Vice Mayor.
That is exactly the purpose of the-
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to please do not violate the rules of the quorum. Um, you are aware of these, you're, you're a candidate, so I ask you to please, again, um, you know, go by the rules, and, and you should know this. So, please go ahead and, and don't make any references that are not pertinent to-
And Vice Mayor, if I may just add, uh, a public meeting as this, a Commission meeting,
is a limited public forum, so you don't have a constitutional right to essentially say what you want. We do have the right to, uh, enforce the quorum, and anything that's impertinent or slanderous should not be allowed.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, George.
Some then tried peddling lame and pathetic excuses for their pettiness. Uh, some tried to latch on to some fake high principle. Uh, a week later, I listened as one of the Commissioners, we all know who that is, uh, tried to sell his excuses to some old ladies at the Gateway Center. Uh, their faces said it all. Does he think we're that stupid? Uh, I have spoken to numerous residents about this issue over the last month. Uh, every single time, their reaction was, they did what? We gotta get those people out of there. Uh, I can tell you, this resonates. This little clever discussion that, uh, you just had is not gonna work. Uh, I once said that, uh, some of the people here, if I may finish, because I was interrupted.
Go ahead, you have five seconds.
Uh, I once said that some of you got elected under false pretenses. This ex- explains this. Uh, I was right. Uh, is this the kind of City Council we want to have? Uh, I think not. Uh, so guess what? Uh, the November election is coming soon. Thank you.
We all see you for what you are.
All right. Jerry, please stop this. Please, let's, let's respect the deus, okay? Let's keep the quorum. Thank you.
The next speaker is Leonid Katz.
Mr. Katz actually, uh, feels that he's uncomfortable speaking in English, and he asked me to speak for him. So, I'm familiar with what he said. I will translate as best I can.
We don't, we don't allow proxy speakers.
We don't allow that.
So, you do not allow, so if an individual does not feel comfortable speaking in English, then he cannot speak? Is that the procedure?
No, but this is clearly, this gentleman has not approached the City Clerk, has not mentioned anything within that regard, and it's just an opportunity to get another three minutes.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Vitaly Falkovich.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vitaly Falkovich, United Two Aviast Restaurant, one sixty-seven Terrace, Pomona Bay, Miami. Uh, as a visitor of Sunny Isles, you see what an amazing job you guys do, this administration, and seeing your services that City of Sunny Isles provide, Police Department, Public Works, and everybody else. It starts with the Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, and also hiring by amazing police chief, and that also starts with the City Manager, that you guys make a good choice with the City Manager and the police chief, and I appreciate that as being a visitor of, of your city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ari Steiger.
Ari Steiger, two-six-two Atlantic Island. I wasn't here for the past six months because I was disgusting with this dais. What you're doing to the city is bad. Spending money like there's no tomorrow. The resolution that was supposed to pass with the sister city of terrorist organizations is disgusting. They killed thirty-four hundred Israelis in, in, in terrorism, beheaded people, beheaded kids, and you voting to, didn't vote, but brought up to, not to eliminate sister city with terrorist groups. I think that's a shame to the city, and it should be, I don't know what to say anymore, but it's disgusting. Uh, another thing, we have a charter company in the island. Nothing was done for the past six, seven months with it, with the City Manager.
Thank you.
You know, they're the big boat when you- You know, they're the big boat when you go into the island, and sometimes they have two big boats.
So Ari, I'll have, I'll have the City Manager look into that. I'll have him contact you, yeah.
And comes November, we'll make sure you're not gonna vote it in. You, as a Jewish guy, shame on you.
Okay, please, the quorum.
Please, let's keep the quorum.
I can't.
Okay, yeah, please. All right.
Last speaker is Jody Joseph.
Jody Joseph, 1850 60 North Bay Road. Just, I understand that you all can't really say anything, but honestly speaking, to accuse everyone up here of anti-Semitism and being pro-Hamas is absolutely outrageous, because frankly, speaking from actual factual information, the only person that supported a pro-Hamas individual and gave her a scholarship, and I'm just speaking in terms of facts, is Mayor Larissa Svetchen, and it's all documented on her Facebook page. She congratulated her.
Please, let's not, let's not mention any names.
Okay, I'm sorry, the Mayor, but we know, no one up here is anti-Semitic, and to accuse you of that is absolutely horrible. And quite frankly, this person got caught because the person she supported, her father ripped a Israeli banner out of someone's hand, and she is so panicked because she realized she has to backpedal because she knew that this family is anti-Semitic. The Mayor's sister, who she's very close with, lived directly next door to this family.
Can we please, can we please not, not mention names, please? Can, it's not just to mention a name, it's just very impertinent.
Okay, but I'm just saying, they're saying, and you being Jewish, and I mean terrible to accuse you to be anti-Semitic, and Fabiola, and you, Alex, and you, Jennifer. That's absolutely outrageous, because again, facts speak for themselves, and we know the only person that's supporting an anti-Semitic person is the person we're referring to. I'm not saying any names. What am I doing wrong?
It doesn't matter if it's a name. It's a matter of, it's disrespectful. We know who you're referring to. You've already named the person. We're trying to establish the quorum where we're not accusing or directing comments, impertinent comments to any individuals
on the case. I'm sorry, but I'm just saying, it already came out, and it's in emails, and it's on letters, and it's in texts, that they are all anti-Semitic.
I think we get the message. Thank you, so let's...
Can I finish? I have a minute left?
You could finish, yeah. Finish, but please, yeah.
Okay, I'm just saying something that's honest, without a name, and we all know this happened, and it's on a Facebook page. It's been posted, and quite frankly, in the Sunny Isles Beach Magazine, can I just say something about the Sunny Isles Beach Magazine? There's a three-page spread about this person, and people are upset in the city because she was given a scholarship. The only person that, you know, supported this person is, we know who that poor person is.
Jody, you know what?
I'm not mentioning a name.
No, I know, Jody, but you're, we're referring to someone, and I think that we all know who it is, yeah.
Right, but I'm saying it's not right to be, all of you to be called anti-Semitic, and I'm just saying it's not right.
Can you please explain?
We're directing comments in fault or lack of, whatever it may be.
Well, it's factual, we know that.
Factual to some, factual perhaps not to others.
Oh, no, it's written, writing.
I'm not arguing. What I'm saying is that we don't direct comments towards individuals. It's against the code, my direction to you, or not direction, my, sorry, my counsel to you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to state the truth, that they are not anti-Semitic.
Thank you, Jody.
That's all.
If I may, I would like to finish with a message, but after you.
Go ahead, no, no, go ahead.
Okay, so first, I wanted to pray for the victims of last weekend attempt to President Trump, and I wanna read something about it. So, "Political rhetoric in the minds of disturbed individuals is very dangerous, especially in an era where information flows freely and words can be wielded with unprecedented reach. Lies, when repeated over and over again and spoken with conviction, have the power to chatter trust, divide communities, and incite chaos. They prey on people's fears and insecurities. Political rhetoric, too, also holds immense power. When used responsibly, it can inspire and unite, but when manipulated, it can fuel hatred, justify violence, and embolden those who seek to destabilize society. We must acknowledge the profound impact serial liars and their incendiary words have on those who are most vulnerable, individuals already grappling with their own inner demons. For them, the distorted reality painted by lies and vitriolic speech can become a dangerous echo chamber, amplifying their distress and driving them towards acts of desperation and violence. Our responsibility is clear. We must foster a society where facts are respected, where we lead with integrity and compassion drive our interactions. Let us commit ourselves to this cause. Let us be vigilant against the spread of lies, and let us work together to build a world where truth prevails, where wars heal rather than harm, where every person can find peace and understanding. Thank you."
Well, thank you very much. And with this, motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it, we adjourn?
Yeah, what?
No second.
No second, right? All right, again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to everybody. Thank you for coming.